Good evening, I'd like to call the May 25th Tacoma Public Schools Board Meeting to order. And we're going to begin this evening with a flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may I please have a roll call?
President Ushka.
Present.
Vice President Cobb.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
And Director Viall.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion for an adoption of the agenda, please?
Move approval.
I'll second.
The agenda's been moved and seconded for approval a couple times, is there any comments or questions from the board? Seeing not all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. Item number five is the recognition of staff, students, and community. 5-1 is the recognition of five Tacoma High School students for earning national academic recognition.
Thank you President Ushka and members of the board. U.S. News and World Report and the Washington Post both publish annual lists recognizing academic performance of high schools across the country. The two publications use slightly differing criteria. U.S. News and World Report considers how all students and disadvantaged students perform against the state averages. Meanwhile, the Washington Post publishes a list of what it calls "America's Most Challenging High Schools." They examine the number of Advanced Placement International Baccalaureate and Advanced International Certificate of Education tests given at each school. Based on the U.S. News and World Report formula, four Tacoma High Schools won honors. That includes Stadium High School, Wilson High School, the Science and Math Institute, the Tacoma School of the Arts. Based on the Washington Post formula, three Tacoma High Schools earned national rankings: Lincoln High School, Wilson High School, and Stadium High School. Here with us tonight is Principal Kevin Aketa from Stadium High School, Liz Minks, co-director at the Science and Math Institute, John Kettler, the co-director at the Tacoma School of the Arts, Indiana Sette, the principal at Wilson High School. We ask that you recognize them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sweetie.
So proud of you guys, awesome.
Outstanding, John.
Congratulations.
Mr. Irwin, can you come on up? You were just giving an award and we were very efficient, we'd love to shake your hand and give you a quick penny. And you will be getting your banner with the rest of your colleagues to hang proudly in your gym.
Congratulations, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Outstanding, thank you to everyone for your hard work earning those awards. Moving on to item 5.2 is recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Courtney Lawson at DeLong Elementary School, the DeLong Elementary School Social Worker.
Good evening, President Ushka, Superintendent Santoro, Deputy Superintendent Garcia, and the rest of the board. Glad to be here with you this evening. We are recognizing a Gold Star Community Partner, as you know. It was established to recognize community partners and each year we have a few individuals, not organizations, but individuals that are recognized for standout volunteerism or excellence in building authentic partnerships. Courtney Lawson from DeLong, she's a social worker and she models exemplary customer service through a humble approach of bringing people together, listening, developing plans, and following through to completion. On March 23rd, DeLong's great sense of community was on full display at their first-ever Unity in the Community event. To say that it was a success would be a monumental understatement. Approximately 200 to 250 DeLong families, parents, students, siblings, grandparents, and friends attended, combined with various vendors and the school staff, and the total was really about 300 folks. DeLong was privileged to have resource and service providers available to families in the evening. They came together to decrease barriers. The Resource Fair was more successful than expected and without Courtney's organization of the numerous community partners such as the Northwest Justice Project, United Way 211, the Parent Language Support, Eloise's Cooking Pot, and Volunteer Legal Services were just some of the few folks that came out. Courtney personally called and reached out to every one of the over 30 partners present. After 25 pizzas and about 12 pounds of salad and handing out wonderful raffle prizes, the feeling of community was clearly evident. DeLong's principal, Eric Konoshi, said the feedback we received from the participants was unanimously positive and appreciative that we withhold such an event for them. We envision what a school community can truly be, this is exactly what it should resemble. There is no way this event would have been a success if it was not for Courtney's leadership. Courtney is also instrumental in connecting families with various resources in the DeLong school area and is director of the weekly Backpack Program, which provides approximately 100 DeLong students with food items donated by St. Leo's, St. Mark's, and the Emergency Food Network for the weekends. What is clearly evident is that Courtney Lawson is not only a highly valued and respected member of the DeLong Elementary staff, but she's an advocate for DeLong families. It is for this leadership and commitment that we recommend she be recognized with the Gold Star Community Partner Award for the month of May. Can we recognize her?
Absolutely.
So I have the best job in the whole world, and it just feels like a blessing to be able to do this for my families and the kiddos there, so thank you so much.
Thank you for all your work. Thank you, now we're moving on to item 5.3, which is the recognition of 2017 Distinguished Budget and Presentation Award winner, Budget Director Kristen Bell and team.
Good evening, thank you President Ushka and members of the board. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, is a major professional association servicing the needs of nearly 19,000 appointed and elected government finance practitioners. The Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from GFOA represents a significant achievement and reflects the commitment of Tacoma Public Schools staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. It is our recommendation that the Board of Directors recognize Rosin Medina Chief Financial Officer, Kristen Bell Budget Director, Walter Buford Senior Financial Analyst, Rose Owen Senior Financial Analyst, Jody Berry Senior Financial Analyst, and Josh Delay Senior Financial Analyst.
Congratulations, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to item 5.4, which is yet another recognition celebrating the 2017 Washington State ASCD Outstanding Young Educator Alyssa Farias. Pardon my pronunciation, I'm sure that you can get it right for me.
Thank you President Ushka and members of the board. The Washington State Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, known as ASCD, sponsors an annual awards program that salutes a new generation, a new generation's passion for excellence. Known as the Outstanding Young Educator Award, a nominee is an education professional 40 years of age or younger who demonstrates an exemplary commitment and exceptional contribution to the profession. ASCD considers these four areas: number one, impact on students; number two, creativity and innovation; three, leadership and impact in the school or district; and four, the contribution to the profession. The winner receives a check for $1,000 and will be honored during the annual Washington Teachers Conference. The winner will also receive a complimentary membership to ASCD International and Washington State ASCD. The 2017 winner for Outstanding Young Educator is Alyssa Farias, a National Board Certified World Language Teacher at Lincoln High School. Alyssa has been with Tacoma schools since 2007 and during her time she has become a teacher leader at Lincoln, our district, and our state. Here to share a little bit more about Alyssa is Lincoln High School President, Pat Irwin.
So Alyssa Farias has been with me for nine years, and I remember the interview when we made the decision to hire her. And Alyssa gave off the vibe then and she's carried it through for the past nine years, and that is, she is the best advocate for herself to become a better teacher every day in every way. She's always looking for opportunities to learn, which is why this recognition from ASCD is so perfect. She leads in our school both with her practice, the professional development that she offers, the mentoring of new teachers that she provides, and it's not a matter of me asking Alyssa to do things, even if I'm thinking about it, she's asking if she can do something before I can even ask her. So she's the best person to win this award and I'm so proud of her, so proud of Lincoln High School, so everyone here is Alyssa Farias.
I just want to say thank you. When I started in 2007, I was nowhere near the teacher that I am today, and I don't know if, sitting here, you realize how amazing of a school Lincoln is. They took me and just molded me and shaped me, we have great admin, great colleagues. I've been able to grow from the teacher who had no idea what they were doing at all on Eastside Tacoma, teaching at Lincoln, to someone who sees myself as a teacher for the long haul, so thank you.
That ends our period of recognition, but what a great time to celebrate our great teachers and schools and staff throughout the district, particularly as we're moving towards the end of the school year, so thank you to all of you for your hard work each and every day. This brings us to item number six, which is the members of the public they're wishing to address the board. The school board members, we school board members encourage public participation and your input is greatly appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these simple steps. One, complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments, and there's a clock over there. You'll get a warning when you have one minute left, and I believe you get another one at 30 seconds? Nope, you get a warning when you have one minute left and then it beeps when your three minutes are up. With that being said, I will turn this to Superintendent Phyllis Antoino.
So, we have two speakers speaking regarding ELL. The first is Sally Perkins and the second is Kimmy Irene Yin.
Good evening President Ushka and members of the board. First, I want to thank the board for the thoughtful work you're doing on the ELL policy. I think the effort to get the language the way you want it is going to really pay off, so thank you for that. I'd like to ask, in terms of moving that policy forward, once it is adopted, the board consider looking at three things. One, take a look at the ELL data across all of your strategic plan metrics, so across, you know, third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, ELL kids compared to non-ELL kids for both the academic goal and the discipline-related data, so that you can see what the patterns look like. That may give you a way to look at how you might assess what's going on and see the really good things as well as the things that might need improvement. The second thing I'd like to ask the board to consider is having a specific budget proposal for effective language support that will support quality indicators and standards for effective language support in every building and alternative learning site in the district, so that everybody knows what is expected of them in terms of language support for families and community members and parents, and the dollars to make that happen. I'd ask that it be located in the Academic Excellence Part of the Budget next to the ELL funding that's there now for the program stuff, so that the language supports are a partner element along with the actual dollars for the programming. And I think Director Heinz's idea of involving parents and families and community members in the front end, I would urge the board to consider involving those groups in the development of this budget proposal, so that it reflects what people feel will be workable for them. The third thing I'd like to request is that the board consider having an assessment done of the whole ELL program that is similar to the assessment of special education that the Urban Collaborative did about four years ago. I think that assessment was very thorough, it pointed out some strengths, it pointed out some areas for growth, and I think the district has worked incredibly hard to implement recommendations that have strengthened special education services for students in our district, and I think the English Language Learner Program would benefit from a similar approach. Thank you very much for considering these items.
Thank you.
Ms. Perkins, just want you to know that we have initiated an ELL review, it's, I think we just are nearing completion. Next person, Kimmy.
Good evening President Ushka and all of your board of directors. I echo what my colleague from Vivint Schools has shared with you, and I just wanted to give just a little more information as we continue the process of reviewing the ELL policy here in Tacoma Public Schools. English language learners are the fastest-growing segment of the public school population. Over the past 15 years, the number of EL students have nearly doubled to 5 million. By 2015, ELL enrollment in United States schools will reach 10 million, and by 2025, nearly one of every four in the public schools sector students will be an English language learner. What I'd like to share with you is just a very brief NEA report asking many school districts for a call to action. NEA, long committed to improving the education of English language learners, is collaborating with many communities and many organizations on strategies to close the gaps in student achievement, reduce the dropout rate, and increase the number of high school students who go to and graduate from college. They offer some recommendations to school districts, as many school districts are now reviewing their ELL policies, and we'd like to offer that as part of the suggestions and recommendations as you proceed. Extend from one year to a maximum of three years the time for English language learners to master English before being tested in the English and core content areas. Improve the quality of assessments for ELL students, including the provision of additional native language tests. Ensure that all ELL students receive the full range of services they need, both to bring them to English proficiency as well to improve their performance on academic content areas. And four, improve teacher training opportunities to teachers so that they can better meet the needs of such students. NEA also believes and states that these accommodations need to increase the validity and reliability of assessment results for students, also those students who are limited English proficiency students. These accommodations are intended to permit students to demonstrate their academic knowledge despite limited language ability. And once again, I'd like to stress on behalf of Vivint Schools, we support the efforts and we welcome the opportunity for community to continue to work with you. Thank you for your time.
Next Dana Flynn. Dana Flynn.
Good evening. I'm a parent of five children that are Tacoma Public School students. Three of my children attend Crescent Heights Elementary. I am here this evening to voice my concerns about the recent rat infestation at Crescent Heights Elementary and what I perceive as a lack of action taken by the school and the school district. Starting in February, I noticed a strong urine smell at the front entrance of the school. I thought it was just me, but after talking to other parents and staff, I was not alone in noticing the smell. I assume the school was aware of the smell and was fixing the problem. Three months later, I volunteered at the school book fair and stood in the front hallway for a couple of hours, working as a cashier, and the smell of the urine was unbearable. I talked to the principal and he said he was aware of the problem and it was getting worked on. I then contacted his supervisor and left a message about the smell and poor air quality. I called her back the next day and she told me that she was made aware of the problem the day I called her and left a message. I requested that she have the principal send out a letter to parents letting us know what was going on with the problem and solution to fix the problem. A letter went home to parents on April 26th. I was shocked to return to the school on Thursday, May 4th and discovered nothing had been done to fix the strong rat urine smell in the school. This smell had been going on for at least three months. Parents had complained to the principal, staff had complained to the principal, PTA had complained to the principal, yet nothing had been done to get rid of the serious health and safety problem that was right at the front door. Why? Due to the lack of action by the school, I felt I was left no choice as a concerned parent but to contact the superintendent, the school board, post the situation on social media, and contact the media and health department about the severe rat urine smell. In less than 24 hours after I posted the situation on social media, the school district had a team out at the school on Saturday, May 6th, removing the rat's nest above the front door along with four live rats and the insulation soaked in urine and feces. As a parent, I should not have been put in this position. The school should have taken care of the rat infestation. Who didn't report this serious issue to the school district? Who didn't follow up? Why was it left to a parent to complain on social media to get the district to finally take action? When parents and staff complained to the principal of serious health and safety issues, respond and take action. When parents call or email the superintendent and complain about serious health and safety issues, respond and take action. When parents call or email the school board and complain about the serious health and safety issues, respond and take action. I'm a big fan of Crescent Heights and have volunteered many hours over the years because I love the school, children, and staff. Never ever again should something like this happen. Contrary to the principal's messages to families, there was a mystery as to what was causing the smell, there was no mystery, it was right at the front door. Rats living right above the front entrance for months, disgusting. I can't imagine the principal, superintendent, or any school board members allowing rats to live in their homes for months. Please let this be a learning lesson, thank you.
So next we have some parents from Brown's Point that are all speaking on the same topic. We're going to ask that we let you limit your comments to two minutes instead of three, so just please know that the buzzer will ring at one minute and then you'll have a minute remaining. I've also asked Steve Story to give an update since the concerns are, you know, we're very familiar with the concern, we've gotten lots of emails, and so I want Steve to talk about what, you know, what's in motion.
Okay, thank you. We want to take a moment this evening to thank the Northeast Tacoma community for reaching out to our planning and construction team, senior leadership, and the school board regarding updates, the Brown's Point Elementary School replacement project design. We want to let you know that we are listening and are considering your input as we work to find solutions to your concerns. Major themes we wanted to briefly address tonight include concerns about student capacity and future growth, locations of the music room and the stage, locations of special services, and communication with the community. Regarding student capacity, the current design is for 500 students with a bid alternate for an additional two classrooms for a total capacity of 550. We expect to have final bid numbers in September. The current Brown's Point enrollment was 428 last October. If we are not able to include those two classrooms in the current project due to budget constraints and growth exceeds current expectations, we have many options to respond to that potential capacity need, including adding two classrooms on a later date and are turning the original Brown's Point Elementary building into an early learning center to increase capacity in the new building. We appreciate the demographic data that has been shared with us from the Northeast Tacoma community regarding population forecasting. While we are confident in the nearly two-decade track record of our demographer has for accurate projections, we will be checking with the city and county to verify our data. That said, we hear your concerns and are currently working on a design solution that will maximize the number of classroom spaces within our existing budget. This, excuse me, this effort also includes adjustments to the music room and stage space and locating special services more closely with other support services on the first floor. We look forward to sharing the results of this work with you and the Northeast Tacoma community. We are posting project Q&amp;A on the Brown's Point project page at thebuildingforachievement.com. We will continue to share responses to the concerns on the website throughout the project as well as regular updates at school and community meetings. Community members can also sign up for email updates about the project through our Building for Achievement website, or email questions to planning@tacomaktwel.wa.us. A series of small group sessions for the week of June 12th will soon be available for people to sign up to discuss the evolution of design and upcoming construction logistics. Thank you again to our Northeast Tacoma neighbors for sharing their concerns. We appreciate the passion you have for Tacoma youth, and we look forward to bringing you a new school that supports and celebrates our student-centered vision for elementary education.
Thank you. I'd also ask Dr. Garcia to talk about some other actions that have been taken.
Yeah, just real briefly to the community, as we got the emails and raised the concerns, we started to go deeper into what are some potential solutions. So it's not that those emails are not being addressed. So yesterday we spent approximately three hours looking through each of the concerns, what are the potential opportunities. The Director of Planning and Construction, Swartzky, had an opportunity today to go back out and work with the architect and say, so what's feasible, what's functional? From there, and we haven't had a chance to debrief that today, but I initially got a, it was a great conversation, we have an opportunity to make adjustments that we discussed yesterday. And so our plan is to bring those back out to the community and say, do these meet the intent? What are some of the fatal flaws? And although we may not always agree on the exact solution, does it meet the intent of the four items that our COO, Mr. Story, had mentioned tonight? And so we look forward to, I know that you're here to speak to those, but we also look forward to presenting to you what we heard were the concerns and what are those potential solutions.
So I will call the name of all the speakers. If you'll be really listen to the speaker ahead of you and if they said some of the exact same points, if you would adjust it, we'd really appreciate it. So I'm going to tell you who's at the mic and who's on deck, so that you'll be ready, okay? First person is Charles Jorgensen with Kelly Merrill on deck.
Good evening President Ushka, school board members, and others present. Thank you for your service to our schools, most importantly. Your work impacts thousands of childrens and families in profound ways. I believe you want the best for our children, and in that regard, we have much in common. My name is Charles Jorgensen, I'm the parent of two children who are students at Brown's Point Elementary School, where I get to be five days a week most weeks. I am here this evening along with many other parents from Brown's Point seated here and many more following closely, to let you know that I strongly oppose the current plan for the Brown's Point Replacement School and ask that you stop it from going forward as designed so that changes can be made. For the past 19 months, a tremendous amount of work has been done on the replacement school by many people. Unfortunately, where we are today does not reflect a broad sense of satisfaction about the current design. It is important for you to know that not a single member of the DAC comprised of Brown's Point teachers supports the design. This week I personally spoken with most of the teaching staff at Brown's Point. I can report that 17 teachers, three specialists, and three pairs are opposed to this design. In our communities, I have heard from many people between Thursday evening last week and an hour ago. The list includes 98 parents, 21 grandparents, and 14 neighbors, along with scores of students. In total, there are 133 people who have told me or written to me they do not support this design. Our greatest concern is capacity. The design allows for zero enrollment growth, no room for pre-K classroom, no room for a JAWS classroom, a CEL classroom, other future new programs or additions we may encounter. It seems this design builds on a policy of no flexibility or opportunity for any new ventures. It just doesn't make sense for our current needs or future growth. For the past 19 months, we have been very excited about the prospect of having a new school here, given that the last one was constructed 63 years ago. This is a rare opportunity, let's not waste it. It probably won't come along again in the next 50 years. We have one chance to get it right. Before we commit to design and start construction, let's find greater consensus about the building. Our future will be inside those very walls. Let's work together to do our best to create something we're really proud of and excited about. I have so much more to share, and the secretary told me I could leave some information with her. I hope you will read it thoroughly. In two minutes, Ms. Santoro, you can't possibly understand what we've been through, so I hope you will read this thoroughly, thank you.
Thank you, you can leave it with the secretary.
Kelly Merrill, followed by Jeff Hatri. Kelly Merrill followed by Jeff Hatri.
Hi, thank you for having us here. My name is Kelly Merrill and I'm a parent of a BPE student who will be attending this new school, but I am here and I am advocating for all future Brown's Point students in my community. This school must have enough classrooms to accommodate our children. They are opportunity, the opportunity to learn starts with adequate classrooms. Since 10 years old, I have grown up in this community and attended Brown's Point/Meeker, which Brown's Point absorbed due to growth. Our community continues to grow. Just yesterday, the Tacoma News Tribune reported Pierce County is tied with Portland for third fastest moving house market in the nation. Homelessness crisis, no doubt you are you are aware that King County and Pierce County is and has been in crisis with the homelessness and lack of housing. The district is obligated under the McKinney-Vento Act to educate these homeless children who are more and more migrating south. Tacoma Public Schools stated to us in their goal that is to provide, to build a school to last 50 years. There's no way I can do this in two minutes. Special education, you are well aware of the ADA, second floor will not work, elevators are not conducive for students with anxiety, mental disorders, and sensory needs. Special ed should be on the first floor. I just ask as a social worker and advocate to please reflect on what is driving your decisions. Check and rule out for institutionalized thinking. Check for accurate growth expectations. Check your information on what you've been given. Check for setting this up for failure. We do not want to have to supplement with portables, which in the long run will require more maintenance, which equals more money. Check every stone and opportunity has been sufficiently turned over and thoroughly thought through. Check yourself, if your children were to attend this school, that what decision would you make? Check your knowledge and information of how and what our demographics will be in 20 years. Your decision will greatly impact our community and thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Jeff Hatri followed by Tracy Zar.
Hi, I think I'll be pretty quick, so maybe I can give up some of my time. I am the father of two students at Tacoma, one at Brown's Point and one at the award-winning Tacoma School of the Arts. And I'm here to also express my concerns about the building plans, the way they've been communicated, and the way they seem to be progressing. I'm not an expert in building schools. I come from the trucking and warehousing industry, so I've built terminals and warehouses. And I can tell you that we've never built one that anybody has complained about being too big. We, we need to be very conscious of the fact that one of the things that Brown's Point, that the land around Brown's Point affords is a great deal of space. There's a lot of land there. We need to make sure that we are maximizing how we are using that land. As someone who lives a couple of blocks from the school, I would love to have a beautiful new school, but if I have to choose between aesthetics and the effectiveness and the efficiency of the building, I'm going to go with effectiveness and efficiency for the students every time. Finally, the TPS school or the TPS Strategic Goal Number Two says that it is about partnership and it says, "We will fully engage our parents, community, and staff in the education of our children." Unfortunately, during this experience, I don't think that me and my fellow, my fellow parents feel like we have necessarily seen that. And I hope we are ready to work together to change that. Thank you.
Tracy Zar followed by Eric Lindstrom.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Tracy Zar and I'm a parent of two Brown's Point Elementary School students. My son will be entering third grade next year and my daughter is finishing fifth grade. I'm concerned that the new design that's been presented is not adequate to meet the needs of the students and that it doesn't have enough classroom space. Since my daughter has been at Brown's Point Elementary, she was in a class in kindergarten that her grade had to be split up from three classes on the first day of school to four classes by the first week of school, first or second week of school. So in the duration that my children have attended Brown's Point Elementary School, we have already had the need to have an extra classroom. Fortunately, the school at that time was able to accommodate that within the building. With the design that only has 18 classrooms, my concern would be that if there was growth, that that would not happen. And I do not believe portables are the way to go for kids to learn. I just hope that the school district will consider to continue to partner with the parents and the members of the community. I would agree that our community is growing. My cousin and his fiance, who do not have children yet, recently bought a house in our neighborhood. One of the reasons being they had heard such good things about the school district and especially Brown's Point Elementary, which is where their future children will go. So again, I appreciate you taking the time to hear from us parents and really truly hope that what you said earlier this evening goes through in regards to you willing to continue to partner and listen to what we have to say.
Eric Lindstrom followed by Jeannie Nist.
It appears that Eric Lindstrom is stuck in traffic and has not yet arrived. Or, I'm sorry, I didn't see it back there.
Hello. So, sorry I'm late, but like some of the other parents of seeing the, seeing the school and knowing what's going on in the construction industry, being a construction myself, and then the expansion and growth for this, this school district, and what Brown's Point community ends up being, there's tons of people, were a transplant from Oregon. And we came from Oregon to this school because my family has community members that were here and we look specifically in this area. So the, the reach of what this school has meant to people that have no history here before, but their families went to this school is, is very, very far-reaching and having a, a brand-new facility that goes in to replace an existing school that is at capacity, like some of the other parents have said, it just seems that if, if other options could be considered to look at budget and costs of how that might end up impacting the other, the children of the school and then how the construction activities will ultimately impact our, our kids throughout this upcoming school year. And, and just knowing what that's going to end up being and how, and how we can communicate that and work with the district and the contractor and the design team to provide input that we might be able to see from a different perspective as a parent and then also from our individual careers that might have weigh-in as well. Thank you.
Jeannie Nist followed by Andrea Martino.
Eric's very tall, so hopefully the microphone will work. Good evening. My name is Jeannie Nist. I'm the parent of two children who attend Brown's Point Elementary. I've also been a member of the Design Advisory Committee for the past two years. Tonight, there are nine parents here from Brown's Point and we're here to publicly share our concerns with you about the latest design proposal for the new school. I want to say that we're here in the spirit of partnership, recognizing that we have a shared commitment to ensuring that the students in Brown's Point and across the district have access to high-quality schools. I also want to acknowledge that I received a call this afternoon from Dr. Gray, our principal at Brown's Point. I was happy to hear the district is now willing to work with us on our concerns and to meet with family members over the next several weeks about some proposed changes. Last fall, the Department of Planning and Construction unveiled a proposal for the new Brown's Point Elementary that was a reflection of many community conversations. The community was informed just last week that this proposal has drastically changed with no community input during those intervening months. While I understand that much of the change is budget-driven, we have one chance to get this right and build a school that will serve our community for the next 50 years. I also want to point out that we're a remote neighborhood and that it's not really an option for our students to be bused to other schools since we're so far from the rest of Tacoma. We're not here to ask for bells and whistles, but to urge the district to address three critical concerns. The first is building capacity, which you've already heard about from several speakers. I just want to point out, our concern about the building capacity number is that the special education and other support service classrooms are counted in that building capacity count as general education classrooms. Those support services need to be provided to students regardless of what classroom is their home classroom. So we need those in addition to general education classrooms to meet all of our students. Second, we'd like to point out the concerns about the special education classroom placement on the second floor. Many parents have expressed concern about that and couldn't be here tonight, so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it. Finally, the stage and music room proposal are inadequate for our community's needs. We have a strong commitment to the arts at Brown's Point, supported by parent volunteers, staff, and the PTA. And we really feel that a stage is important to meet those needs. So again, thank you and we look forward to working with you.
Andrea Martino.
Excuse me, I have a cold. My third child is the, going to be a fourth grader next year and she will be a fifth grader next year, so she will never attend this beautiful new school. So therefore, I am here just on behalf of my community. And I just wanted to briefly address the Learning Lab. It's for all special group meetings, all enrichment activities. It just seems like a lot of things that we can offer our students are going to be crammed into this one space. They would include visits from Point Defiant Zoo, Pioneer Farms, health screenings, flu shots, dental care program, PTA meetings, Community Resource Center backpack, SNAP program, Spanish, our art docent classes, the Creative Arts Lab, Popcorn Friday, Bricks for Kids, Test for Life, robotics course, drama course. And I just ask that the board consider where all of these activities will happen. Thank you for your time.
So thank you very much. I hope that you heard Mr. Story say that the special ed issue has been addressed. The music room issue has been addressed. The classroom capacity issue has been addressed. So please look at your, it's going to be on the website, did you say, Steve? Where's the information?
On thebuildingforachievement.com.
Point of clarification. When it says it's addressed, we worked through some of these things yesterday, so you have not had a chance to see them and we will be bringing them to you in a series of small group as well as reaching out to some of you as you heard individually. So when we say addressed, we're not saying you're going to see the same picture again. Okay? We're saying that we heard you and we spent a lot of time yesterday and then we spent some time with the architects today to hear each of those concerns and then how could we do those functionally? And we're excited to bring those back to you to show you that, what we mean by how it was addressed.
That's what I said, didn't I?
That's all, end of public comment.
Director Heinz.
Thank you. Do we have the demographers' projections?
Yes, we have a series of, I don't have them here in front of me tonight, but we, we have a demographer.
I know we have them. Does anybody know them?
I don't have them off the top of my head.
Mr. Story.
I don't have them on top of my head. I don't have them with me right now.
I mean, that's the sum of the point, right?
We have this, what's important is the school age, the school age demographer for the children that are predicted to be in Brown's Point. And we're asking our demographer to go back and look at those specific, not the population increase, not the general population, not Pierce County, but the predictions for the schoolchildren in Brown's Point. But as I said, we are probing and looking into the opportunities with the site that we have to increase classroom capacity.
So can we please make the demographers, the student number is the, I appreciate the passion, the student number is the pertinent number. And we're in the midst of building 14 buildings with 550 million, which is a fixed number. So we have to be very accurate to meet the needs of each individual building within the community across the next several years. And so to have, to have, I would love to have a conversation around, because our demographer has been very accurate, which is, I don't know if he has a crystal ball or how he does it, but he has been uncannily accurate. And I think a refresher on that number would be very helpful.
The school design based on the demographic demographer was this 500 students would provide capacity, room for growth. And so with that, we are also though, as the superintendent said, is we're going back out to the city. We're going back out to the county and saying, is there unforeseen or is there things in the permitting process just to verify those numbers? And then we're also asking the demographer to go back out and double-check. Do our due diligence and to that. And so we will be doing that over the course of the next couple of weeks as well.
Okay. And then making that public when it's, alright, thank you.
Director Lindstrom.
So I, I've been concerned for several months now because we have 14 schools on there. I don't know that we have enough money to finish them all. And we are doing a lot of cutting of some of the schools because, you know, doing a lot of budgeting and cutting back, which is very concerning to me. I just want every school to be the best possible school and maybe we aren't going to be able to finish our buildings on the end. Every single one's going to be compromised. I see Grant being compromised. I see this one being compromised. And that's a big concern to me. And I think we need to have an update. You know, we went out with this bond issue, 14 schools. Maybe it was way too aggressive. I know we added money to Sammy and some other projects. Things are getting more expensive. Was it realistic, that budget? And I think I'd like to have that discussion. I don't like what I see in some of these schools. I did not like this design from day one. And it's interesting for me to hear that the teachers didn't like the design and a lot of the parents didn't like the design. We never got that information.
Thank you, Director Lindstrom. Director Viall, did you have comments?
I do. I would just like to reiterate some of Director Heinz's comments. Our demographer has been right on and in a previous life. I supervise Population Studies Division at the Office of Financial Management, which does all these projections across the state. And he is about as precise as you could get in the time that I've been here. So I do have some knowledge of how that, that process works. OFM is the one that does our numbers and decides how much money everybody gets based upon forecasting and that. So I'd like to see him again and just to refresh our, I guess I am, I am concerned when we do go through these processes that everyone, that we satisfy as much as we can, but on the other hand, we still have three schools to finish and two of those schools, one of them is 72 years old and has had nothing done to it since I went there in 1949 other than paint. And that's Downing Elementary. And Hunt Middle School, neighborhood has been without a middle school for about, almost nine years. And what that has done is a number of our students have gone to University Place and a number of our students in our neighborhood go to Truman, which is about an hour bus ride every day back and forth. And that school was built, the original school, in 1958. So I would hope that we would all remember that we are one large school district and that we need to make sure that all of our children in this district are taken care of and so that we can satisfy the needs of the kids in the west end of Tacoma as we do the kids in Northeast Tacoma. It's a matter of fairness and we're all going to have to compromise some. And I think we can compromise to where we satisfy everyone's needs. But I want to make sure that those two schools, which are the oldest and junkiest ones, quite frankly, in the school district, also get, and Bose Elementary in the southeast portion of the city, that those three are completed also so that all of our children are in healthy, safe buildings. So that's what I'm going to be looking at as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's evident that your entire board is interested in making sure that every student is in a high-quality building wherever they are in the city. It's relevant to the Whole Child Initiative and a strong education and our community hub space. That being said, I wonder if I can look to the superintendent to plan in the future a, a more in-depth report on this information for the board.
Sure, we're glad to do that. And Brown's Point is my neighborhood. I live down the street. So we're invested in making sure it is a school that I can be proud of, that I drive by it every day and that it meets the needs of students. Our bottom line is that it houses our students and that they can get an education there. And sometimes it means we have to, you know, shave off money or add money, but we're committed to adequate space and, you know, a space that is best for the needs of students. So, you know, we're taking the concerns seriously and we will continue to, you know, work. It doesn't mean that we're all going to come to a conclusion where they say, yeah, that's perfect. Because sometimes it ends up, I talked to a Grant parent this morning who said, yeah, we were six million over budget, but we pared it down and we feel like we have what we need. So it's about give and take. We'll continue to do that. That's the end of the public comment.
Thank you very much. That moves us on to item number seven, which is your report, Superintendent Santoro.
So every once in a while, I take a little leeway and decide that it would be great for the board and for our public to be exposed to some of the work that's been going on in our schools. And so we asked the School of the Arts to come today and give us a demonstration. They came last year, if you remember. And I think you all loved it. They did a little presentation of their Soda Bot. They're called the Soda Bots and they're going to give us a presentation, so. Come on up. I don't know if you have an announcer who's going to announce what you're doing. Thank you to everyone who had a public comment. Thank you to, um, everyone who had a, a public comment. Are you the announcer?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you stand at the podium and kinda give a, your-
For you to kind of talk.
Okay, I bet we can hear you. Awesome. You turn to the audience and go come and listen on that side, how about that?
Yeah, we'll go sit on the front.
Alright, so then-
Hi, we are the Soda Bots, first team two-five-five-seven, from Tacoma, Washington. And we wanna tell you a little bit about our story. The Soda Bots, or, the Soda Bots were founded in two thousand eight at the School of the Arts, um, on the belief that without artistic creativity, there is no innovation, and without innovation, there are no engineers. In our ten-year journey, we've grown into a group of diverse members who are skilled in the art of collaboration. My name's Addie, this is Molana, and this is Q, and we are STEAM-powered STEM leaders.
We forge connections between our team members through what we call the Jedi Padawan system. Jedis are the leaders of the team, embodying gracious professionalism, the teaching of Padawan's technical skills, critical thinking, confidence, and leadership. This process is wonderful for getting our members, college, and workforce ready. Currently, nearly ninety percent of our alumni are studying STEM.
The Soda Bots support the First Community because we believe that arts and innovation thrive when shared outside our own team. Realizing the necessity of a community resource, the Soda Bots stepped up and co-founded the Tacoma Robotics Alliance, or the TRA, in two thousand and ten. Our main contribution to this alliance is a full-size, up-to-spec practice field we have provided for every FRC and FTC season. The volunteering culture on the Soda Bots is strong because we value creating a better first experience for all participants. Oh, yeah. The Soda Bots have been the event managers of the FTC Watt League and Interleague competitions for the past three years. We love this opportunity to connect and reconnect with teams, and to help support them through their first weeks of competition. We are also a reliable and collaborative resource at FRC events, often setting up the field, taking it down, and doing everything in between.
The Soda Bots are also really passionate about, about, um, creating gender equality in the First Community. Um, this season, I stepped up and started a research project, um, to measure the gender involvement in, um, the First Community. Out of the fifty-six teams that responded to my survey on the gender demographics of their teams, there was an average of only thirty percent girls on these First Teams. These girls are particularly underrepresented in the Build, Programming, and Drive sub-teams. I also asked teams about the tools they use to recruit girls, and have been sharing these strategies throughout the season. I've presented at workshops at all, uh, all the competitions we've gone to, and at, um, Houston at the World Championship, to spread awareness of the work still needed to create gender equality in the FRC community.
We openly share our knowledge of FIRST and STEM throughout our community, especially through Tacoma's wonderful museums. Increasing our commitment to the Tacoma Children's Museum, we now bring FLL robots there every month, giving kids the opportunity to experience both art and technology. We also set up an FTC field at the Lemay Car Museum, and hold mock competitions for young and enthusiastic drivers.
One of our strongest sustained volunteering commitments is connecting with the children and families in Mary Bridge Children's Hospital in Tacoma. Every two weeks since two thousand thirteen, our members bring safe and engaging robots for the children at the hospital to play with.
On one of my volunteering visits, there was this little boy from the hospital that actually didn't wanna drive the FTC robot we had brought. He actually wanted to take it apart. I happened to have a set of allen wrenches and a screwdriver with me, so that's what we did. He was so excited to be able to take charge of something in his life, and I'm so grateful that I could give him that.
Our calendar is filled with action-based events that ensure that the values of STEAM are recognized.
Our team, sports members from five local high schools.
We make visiting our Capitol in Olympia and school board meetings a priority.
We stretch our boundaries by sustaining our partnership with the Abri Paritas Community Center in Coia, Peru.
We are expanding our sponsor, mentor, and alumni involvement.
And this year, we volunteered at new events, like the Highland Games and the Gingerbread Jamboree.
All of this while still presenting at science fairs and in over forty-five different elementary and middle school classrooms, reaching close to two thousand students. Our programs focus on teaching these young kids about the engineering process and affirming their love of science.
The Soda Bots continue to partner with the Tacoma Public School District to create and sustain a six-week summer camp called Explore, which grew exponentially last year and reached twelve hundred low-income elementary school children. These kids come into our classroom as a blank canvas. When we teach them how versatile NXT robots are, their eyes light up, and they become programmers in just a few short hours. We are witnessing the power of robotics to give youth a passion for STEAM.
We are the Soda Bots.
First team two-five-five-seven, and we are using our creative passions to connect with other teams, community centers, our government, and the aspiring STEAM leaders of tomorrow.
We are proud and honored to be sculpted into proactive, charismatic, and skilled leaders who are ready for college and prepared to take on the world.
Fueled by the arts, there is no container to confine us, for we are confident that our approach of STEAM works.
Thank you so much, um, for letting us come today. Um, we love to share our story with the community. Um, we also wanna ask for your consideration in continuing our outreach programs. Um, one of the ways that we do support, um, the robotics community is a practice field for teams, not only here, not only for our team, but for the Wilson team and for all of the teams in the South Sound. Um, the field is a place where teams can share resources and mentors and ideas, and it's just a really wonderful community. Um, we've had our field at Idea for the past two years, um, but they are making a new metalworking shop at that location, um, so, which is super cool. Um, but unfortunately, we can't have our field there anymore. Um, and so we're asking for your consideration, um, when allocating, um, spaces to consider us, um, in the forefront of your mind, um, as a way to grow our team and let our members reach their fullest potential, but also for us to reach out to, uh, middle school teams, middle school classrooms and elementary school classrooms and grow teams there. And this is a really great resource for us to do that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? If not, alright, well, thank you.
Thank you so much. There you go. Thank you so much. You guys did great.
They do, don't they? They even have it together?
Those are the board members.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, let's go ahead and give another round of applause for the Soda Bots.
Uh, for the next part of my report, I've asked Lisa Nolan to give us an update and introduction, uh, to some new staff members. Some that you may recognize and others that you may not. Lisa?
Great, thank you very much. Um, for your recommendation this evening, we have a few admin hires who are on the personnel recommendation on the consent agenda. And these people would have a start date of July one, twenty seventeen, per your approval. So I just wanna be clear that it's, of course, pending your approval, but I'd like to make some quick introductions. Here this evening, we have James, James Neal, who is currently the principal at Bernie Elementary School, and he will be the director of athletics and activities. Oh, well, just give away, James, just away. Although I'm sure he would be prepared with a great speech. We also have, who, uh, Ronel Ballitbit, who's con, uh, currently the assistant principal at Lister Elementary School, and he will assume the position of principal at Bernie Elementary School. And we are very excited tonight to bring someone all the way from Texas. For your introduction this evening, we have Morris Aldridge, who currently serves as the Assistant Superintendent for Operational Services at the Clint Independent School District in El Paso, Texas. And he will be the director of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to everybody, pending our approval momentarily. Uh, the next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I may have a motion to approve-
I move the, uh, I move the approval.
The consent agenda has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the boards? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, uh, all those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-zero. I'd like to note that I believe that Director Heinz has left for an important engagement related to, isn't it sports coaching for his kids?
Yeah, he's got a game tonight.
And at Tacoma School, since we believe that students come first, we figure we'll excuse that.
Yep.
Uh, the consent agenda, uh, has now been moved and passed. Uh, for those of you in the audience, it is a lot of lengthy information. All the board members have received this in advance. We've asked questions, we've gotten answers before we've gone through and passed all that information in one fell swoop. Um, that being said, it does bring us to number nine, which is policy matters, of which there are none. And on item number ten, there is no quarterly report for the quarterly financial update. Item number eleven, under Curriculum and Instruction, is eleven point one, which is approval to purchase springboard curriculum materials for the seventeen, eighteen school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase of springboard materials in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars and forty-five cents for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year funding source Curriculum and Instruction funds.
Thank you.
Move adoption?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Viall?
I understand this is a, a pre-AP program. Is this enough materials to cover the number of kids that we want to?
So the program is, is for our six or ten. And this is the supplementary workbooks that go with the core curriculum.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I want-
Yep.
So there'll be enough, okay.
Yes, and in addition to this is, when we do this, uh, our teachers also have the flexibility to supplement the curriculum with novel sets. And we've had that discussion in the past, and we've supported them as well with that.
Yeah, it just seemed like a small amount of money for what we were-
You bet. It's, it's consumable products.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-zero. Item twelve point two, item, oh, I'm sorry. Item number twelve is business matters. Item twelve point one is the adoption of Resolution twenty-twenty four-oh-three-B Plan revisions.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution twenty-twenty Amendment of the four-oh-three-B Plan documents.
Move approval?
I'll second it.
Item has been moved in second. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-oh. Item number twelve point two is the adoption of Resolution number twenty-twenty-one, Approval of the Assignment of Teachers to Classes Other Than in Their Areas of Endorsement.
I'll move approval.
Whoops.
We was jumping the gun here. Sorry.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution number twenty-twenty-one, which permits the assignment of teachers to classes other than those in their areas of endorsement for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year.
I move approval.
Second.
The item has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to make a brief comment that, uh, this number has diminished a lot since two thousand and nine or ten, when I first came on the board. And so I really appreciate that, 'cause that's the hard work of HR, making sure that we've got the right stu-, teachers in front of the right students every day. Um, that being said, although, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Director Cobb, go ahead.
Can you tell us how many, I mean, if you don't know, that's fine. How many of these folks were on this list the last time we approved? Is this, is this cumulative, or?
This is not cumulative. This is an additional, which still keeps us around the two percent threshold, which is under other districts. Um, however, it's kind of a moving target, and so I can tell you that actually, since this recommendation was placed on here, uh, one of these teachers actually gained the endorsement, and so they wouldn't be off the list today. Um, but we are required to report nonetheless.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Further questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-zero. Item number twelve point three is the Approval of Increase for Maximum Healthcare Contract, TSD seventeen zero-three-seven.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, recommends the Board approves the increase of three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars for maximum healthcare contract for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Item has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-zero. Bringing us to item twelve point four, which is the Approval of Interlocal Agreements for the seventeen, eighteen school year.
So just a brief comment before the recommendation, in an effort to try, we bring these to you on an annually basis, and so instead of, of trickling them throughout the spring, our Assistant Superintendent of Support Services done a marvelous job of trying to bring them all to you at once. Um, and so the Deputy Superintendent, on the behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, requests the board to approve that multiple interlocal agreements with various school districts. Funding source, special education.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just have one comment. I was, uh-
Yeah.
-really amazed by the number of school districts that we are providing special services for, particularly in the special education area that, I knew we did that, but when you see them all in that list, it's pretty impressive. And obviously, that's, uh, something that, that we do, and we do well, and it's, uh, I think it's a testament to that, that other districts choose to, to send their children to us.
Absolutely, and I would just make the comment that, uh, just as it's equally vital that we provide the services and that they're interested in that, it's another mountain entirely to get all those agreements into one board agenda item, so I appreciate that as well.
I do, too.
Are there other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four-zero. Item twelve point five, Approval of Contract for Layer Two and Three Switches and Services.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services, recommends the Board of Directors approve the contract award to Warranty Plus Service Center, Inc., DBA Synchronist Technologies, Funding Source Technical, excuse me, Technology Capital Fund and General Fund.
Move approval. Second it.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, item passes four-zero. Item twelve point six, the Approval of Contract for Wireless Hardware Installation and Support.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Technology Services, recommend the Board of Directors approve the contract award to Warranty Plus Service, DBA, Inc., Synchronist Technologies, Funding Source Technology Capital Fund, General Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Cobb?
Do you have any sense, just offhand, of, with this expansion, some of the areas that will be most, or sites are, that will be most impacted?
I am going to bring our Executive Director of Technology Services, Mr. Sean Taylor, up to respond, please.
I think he read your mind, 'cause he was on his way.
Yeah, he, he knows better.
Uh, could you re-ask the question?
I just asked with this expansion, which sites are which, who's most impacted?
So, pretty much every classroom has wireless coverage at this point. What this is gonna do is help us almost double the intensity or capacity in each classroom, and also increase it to outside spaces and common spaces.
Thank you, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Other questions? Director Wenskill?
Yeah, so my question is, um, it says general fund, uh, it says, um, uh- Yeah, so, my question is, it says general fund, it says, you know, the technology...
Capital.
Capital fund and general fund. So, what is the percentage of both of those?
Probably the biggest number to be aware of is E-Rate funds about seventy percent of it, and then based on the funding posture at the time, most of it's going to be coming out of the tech capital project plan, most likely all of it. But that's a decision at that point, with the CFO and myself, as to position that.
Yeah, because it's quite a number, and then last meeting, we also had a big item also, so...
Right. So, about seventy percent of that contract will be funded by E-Rate, which is a federal funding source.
That's great to know, thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes four oh. I believe that brings us to item twelve point seven. Seeing nobody correcting me, I'm going to go on. Approval of Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement, year three of three-year agreement.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the executive director of technology services recommends that the board of directors approve renewal of the Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement for the 2017-18 school year Funding Source Technology General Fund.
I move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just have one comment, I think it's...
Director Vial.
Thank you, I think it's neat that staff and our students are able to avail themselves of Microsoft, was it 365 and other Office and so on, which is expensive, but it's something Microsoft allows us to do by giving us extra licenses, or any of us can use that if we choose to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four oh. Item twelve point eight is the approval of the inter-agency agreement with the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services.
The chief financial officer recommends that the board of directors approve the inter-agency agreement with the State of Washington Department of Enterprise Services to provide lean transformation consulting services to the district over the life of the agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
The item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Witzke?
So, I went to one of these trainings, and, you know, it's good to go once, but I just hope we get something out of it, because a lot of it is, I just hope we're using the taxpayers' money wisely on this issue.
So, what we're being provided with is actual services. This is not to receive necessarily training. There may be training down the road, but what the Department of Enterprise Services will do, and I'll use payroll as an example, because that's where we're going to start, is that they will come in and they will work with us to identify the processes that occur within the payroll department and the human resources and budget departments around how we process payroll and find efficiencies and improvements to help us save time and resources, which will have an incredible benefit for the district.
Yeah, I guess I thought that would have come with the whole new system that we adopted in the last couple of years, so it's kind of surprising it didn't.
Well, frequently, lean consultation and streamlining organizations doesn't come necessarily as a piece of a program, but rather as an organizational overview and streamlining of tools, so I would say I very much look forward to it, and I hope that you bring cookies, because particularly with those sort of things, or frequently the moving of people's cheese and customs that they're used to. So, it can be some very difficult change in terms of the way that people process information and work, so it's courageous to invite it upon yourself, and I commend that as well. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four oh. Item twelve point nine is the approval of the maximum healthcare contract for seventeen eighteen nursing services.
The deputy superintendent on behalf of the assistant superintendent of student support services recommends the board of directors approve the attached contract for service with maximum healthcare services for nursing services for the 2017-18 school year and authorize the superintendent to engage in any final negotiation of terms related to the same as necessary.
Move approval.
Second.
Item's been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Director Witzke?
Just one comment, because I thought we, somebody told me who's in the district, a nurse, that they thought they, most of the positions were full, so are we having better luck at recruiting?
Absolutely, and so what this does is allows us to be proactive and have a contract and only use it if needed. And so, our healthcare service team has done a phenomenal job of recruiting and filling positions, and we're seeing the need go down, but we want to be, once again, proactive and ready if there is a need to ensure that we're expediting that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four zero. Item twelve point ten is the approval of the ProCareTherapy Inc. contract for seventeen eighteen.
In spirit of the previous item, this is once again a proactive step. So, the deputy superintendent on behalf of the assistant superintendent of student support services recommends that the board of directors approve the attached contract for service with ProCareTherapy Inc. for nursing services for the 2017-18 school year and authorize the superintendent to engage in any final negotiation of terms related to the same as necessary.
I move approval.
Second.
That is been moved in second. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes four zero. Item number thirteen is other business, and there is none. Item number fourteen is report to the board, and that is also an empty place. Item number fifteen is board comments and reports. I will request that board members keep their reports brief, just because we also have an executive session this evening, and I would begin with Vice President Cobb.
I have no comments tonight, I just love the Soda Bots.
Thank you very much. Director Witzke?
I'll be respectful, and I'll dispense with my half-hour set of comments.
Thank you. Director Vial.
Just two brief ones. Last Friday night, I went to something that I didn't know we had been doing for a while, and that was the TPS Middle School Digital Arts Contest.
Oh, cool.
Or at the Star Center, and I was just blown away by what these kids had produced digitally, from photography to art to everything, and so next year, if you have a chance, go. We've been doing this, I guess, for about two or three years, and they got first, second, third place awards, and it was kids from across the district middle school, so that was fun. The other thing was, earlier this week, I attended Justina Johnson's class on equity, and at some point in time, I'd like to have us as a board spend a little time talking about, it was, it's an amazing class, and a whole bunch of our staff were there, and from around the district elementary and so on, and they were saying, wow, we didn't know what our equity policy was. This is who we are. So, about talking about expanding that program, perhaps in a way that all of our staff can take advantage and there'll be some additional classes, but next year, if any of you have an opportunity, it's late in the afternoon, go. I think you will be amazed at what Justina has done and is doing, and we need, since that's our core value and who we are as a district, I think I would like to see all of our teachers either within their buildings, with train the trainer, or whatever, and I would ask the deputy superintendent and the superintendent to kind of put their heads together and think about how we can implement that program. So, that's all I have, trying to be brief, thanks. Legislature is still watching grass growth, so that's about it.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Director Vial, I really hope that we have a budget come July 1st for lots of different reasons.
I don't think we will, frankly, but that's okay.
Okay, well, I might have an unplanned vacation myself, and yeah, yeah, so we're going to go to a beach.
Can we all go?
Yeah, we might have to walk, because the roads might be crowded. Everybody else has challenges. Anyway, I have two very brief things. One is I need to give a quick shout-out to all of the people within the district and within the community that worked along with former board director Connie Rickman at Lincoln High School to launch the Poppy Boington Memorial at Lincoln High School last week, and also for the board members that were able to attend with us. That was a great celebration, and I got to be at Stewart last night. Again, thank you, Director Vial, for being able to be there, and everybody else that came. I live on the east side, and it's going to be a fantastic facility for the whole community, not just for our students, but for today and well into the future, and, you know, they even had green punch to match the cupcakes...
That was pretty cool.
...that went with the Panthers, and I can't even believe that came out of my mouth, but that's just how excited I am. So, thank you very much, and that's the end of my report.
I just have one comment. Could I make on your things?
As long as it's brief.
It's very brief, and so what you forgot to do last night, you were going to do, my mom.
I was going to mention last night, I took notes, and quite frankly, I had a quadmocha on my way there, and I just forgot some things while I was talking. But I can tell it now.
Go ahead.
So, Director Vial's mother was in the very first class at Stewart Elementary in about nineteen twenty-four, and her sister also went there a few years later, so having Director Vial there last night for this renewed opening of that school was particularly significant in the generational history of Tacoma leaders, and we were proud to have her with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, our student board member, Chelsea Olson, I apologize.
Sorry, sweetie.
I have a quick announcement. So, stadium, I wasn't talking about the musical, but of course not. We got fourteen nominations from the Fifth Avenue Theater.
I saw that.
And we had the most nominations out of all the Washington states, so that, I mean, all the Washington school state, all the Washington state schools.
Yeah.
And, yeah, that is amazing, and we're performing at the Fifth Avenue Theater, I believe, June 12.
Are you doing the whole play?
No, just one song.
Oh, wow.
What song are you going to do?
We have no idea.
You don't know?
So, yeah, and then also want to say thank you for the past two years I've been able to serve on this board, so thank you.
Chelsea's last board meeting.
I know.
She's grown up. We'll see her in her prime time here in a couple of weeks, going across the stage.
Yeah.
At a local dome near you.
I'll be speaking at my graduation this year, so...
Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you, sweetie.
Okay.
All right.
Next is the announcement of future board meetings. We will have a meeting on Thursday, June 1st, 2017, at 6:00 PM, which will be a brief business meeting and executive session. Then on Thursday, June 15th, we will have, at 6:00 PM, there'll be an executive session, and then on Thursday, June 22nd, at 6:00 PM, we'll have a regular business meeting. Please note, in this time period, there will be multiple wondrous graduations throughout the district that we'll all be celebrating, which will minimize our time for other business during this exciting month. Item number seventeen is our executive session, and the board of directors will adjourn to the executive session for approximately thirty minutes or less to discuss collective bargaining matters in accordance with RCW four-two-point-three-oh-point-one-four-zero, as well as to review negotiations on the performance of publicly bid contracts when public knowledge regarding such considerations would cause a likelihood of increased cost in accordance with RCW Thank you.
Can we head right in, board members? Get right to it. Thank you so much, Chelsea. So nice. Look forward to seeing you.
We're going to miss you.
Yes, you will. Um, is it okay if I take my...
Yes, yes, you may. Yes, you may. Do you want the whole thing or just the tab?
It doesn't matter.
What would you prefer?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
What would you like? It's your choice.
Oh, thank you.
I'll see you at graduation. She wants your name, the whole thing?
Watch your name tag.